Good afternoon to the members of this August body. Good afternoon also to our SP Support Services Office headed by our SP Secretary, Mr. Maximino Nazareno II. Good afternoon also to our guest who is already inside the session hall, Lieutenant Colonel Edwin Pia, sir. And to our friends from media and to everyone here today, once again, good afternoon. Mr. Secretary, you may now proceed with the roll call for the determination of the quorum.
May I request the members of this August body to say aye as I call the rule. Honorable Beverly Dayanan, Honorable Harold A. Montes is on leave, Honorable Manuel Lepardo Jr., Honorable Anna Chirelle Castro is on leave, Honorable Elijah Palmaheal, Honorable Daoud Linzag is on leave, Honorable Stephen Paul Elui, Honorable Maria Lady Hope Makaira, Honorable John Erwin Montoho, Honorable Rochi Ravelo is on official business, Honorable Jerome C. Dayanghirang, Honorable Joson Michael G. Dayanghirang, Honorable Iluteryo Si Manaitai, Honorable Shanin Si Lindtugunan. We have nine SP members in attendance, Madam Chair, your honor.
Considering that we have a master decorum for today's regular session, we can now proceed to the items in the order of business. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Next item is reading and consideration of the minutes Journal of Proceedings of the 18th Sanggonyang Panlawigan of Davao Oriental during its 19th regular session last November 5, 2025 at the SP Session Hall Government Center Dahikan, City of Mati, Davao Oriental.
Honorable Elijah Palmaheal, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I move for the adoption and consideration of the minutes Journal of Proceedings of the 18th Sanggonyang Panlawigan Davao Oriental last 19th regular session dated November 5, 2025 at this SP Session Hall Government Center Dahikan, City of Mati, Davao Oriental. I do so move, Honorable Presiding Officer.
There was a motion for the adoption of an approval of the minutes and the Journal of Proceedings of the 18th Sanggonyang Panlawigan, the 19th regular session dated November 5, 2025 on motion of Honorable Palmaheal seconded by Honorable Montoho. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Next item?
Next item is privilege hour.
We are now under privilege R. Do we have other members of this council who would like to avail of the privilege R? Do we have any members? Yes, Honorable Palmaheal, we are now under privilege R. Yes, for your manifestation, you are again recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I would like to move to include Communication Number 18-174-2025 to be included in the calendar of business for today's business.
If there is an objection from the other members of this council, Communication Number 18-174-2025 is requested for inclusion in the order of business for the day. So, Mrs. Secretary, please take note.
Thank you, your honor.
Okay, so we are still under privilege R. If there are no other members who would like to render manifestations or other reports and observations, we can now proceed to the next item in the order of business.
Next item is question hour. We have with us today our guest Lieutenant Colonel Edwin Pia, the former Battalion Commander of the 67th Infantry Battalion, 10th Infantry Division Philippine Army, who will receive a commendation award from this August body in acknowledgement of his exemplary service to the people of Davao Oriental in safeguarding the community and upholding peace and order throughout the province. Your Honor, Honorable Beverly Dayanan informed the SP SO Office of the Secretary to the Sanggonyan through a call that Colonel Pia will be attending the regular session today to personally receive the award since he was not able to attend on the date previously scheduled by the Sanggonyan.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Secretary. In order to accommodate our guest, may I request again Honorable Elijah Palmaheal for the suspension of our house rules.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I move for the suspension of our house rules to accommodate our guest, Sir Edwin Pia. I do so move, Honorable Palmaheal.
There was a motion for the suspension of the house rules on motion of Honorable Elijah Palmaheal seconded by Honorable Shanin Lindtugunan, Honorable Manaitai, and Honorable Elui. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. House rules are hereby suspended. During the 14th regular session of this Sanggonyan on October 1, 2025, we passed Resolution Number 18, a resolution of commendation, Resolution Number 18-130-10-2025. So considering that the proponent of this resolution, Honorable Rochi Ravelo, is on official business attending an activity at Farmer's Mall, if I may be allowed to read the contents first before we give the floor to our guest for your message, sir, allow me to read the contents of the resolution of commendation. So this is a resolution commending Lieutenant Colonel Edwin L. Pia, O-135513 Infantry General Staff Corps Philippine Army for his eminently meritorious and valuable service rendered as commanding officer of the 67th Infantry Battalion 10th Infantry Agila Division Philippine Army from 4 September 2023 to 14 September 2025, achieving remarkable accomplishments in operational intelligence and civil military undertakings in the province of Davao Oriental. Whereas, as the battalion commander, he spearheaded the execution of three implants, Agila Malinaon Habagatan Mindanao and Tatag Agila, and successfully implemented four case operation plan, three counterintelligence plans, and two counterintelligence projects. These efforts resulted in 8,232 combat operations comprising eight battalion initiated, 14 company level, 34 platoon level, and 8,171 small unit operations, culminating in eight tactical engagements that neutralized six communist NPA terrorists, including two commanding officers of RSDGs namely Judel Virtudaso Icadalso, also known as Jurbiel Jangjalani, and Albert E. Chavez, also known as Aldrin Archie or Diego. Whereas, his initiatives further led to the voluntary surrender of a CNT and two militia ng bayan members, destruction of enemy encampments, and the seizure of critical materials including high- and low-powered firearms and other enemy supplies. This led to the evacuation of remaining CNTs facilitating a joint AFP PNP operation that apprehended eight CNTs from RSDG Jaguar SMRC, including Shadis Bernadine Banis, alias Nicky, the Regional Party Secretary of SMRC. Whereas, in support of law enforcement and proactive intelligence operations, his unit confiscated illegally sourced lumber, seized firearms, apprehended suspects, and intercepted vehicles with insurgent supplies. The battalion executed civil military operations benefiting individuals through various activities and provided disaster response assistance to internally displaced persons. Whereas, under information support affairs, mobile community support and sustainment teams, MCSTs, were deployed, radio broadcasts and community dialogues were conducted, and implemented school hopping activities to counter CPPNPA NDF recruitment and strengthen grassroots awareness. Whereas, in civil affairs, the battalion carried out medical and dental civic action programs, bloodletting activities, brigada-escola engagements, coastal cleanup drives, and tree planting activities. Whereas, educational support included distributing school supplies and youth engagement was promoted through peace and pointy activities, youth leadership summit, and partnerships with people's organizations through community development teams. Whereas, in public affairs, the unit participated national historical events, increased its online presence, and took part in inter-agency coordination meetings with LGUs, IP leaders, and other stakeholders to strengthen unity and advance peace and development. Whereas, in personal development, the battalion awarded honors to civilian active auxiliaries, officers, and enlisted personnel. Troop welfare saw improvements via healthcare partnerships and wellness initiatives with Baganga Davao Oriental Municipal Hospital. Operational readiness was bolstered with upgrades to command, control, communications, and cyber systems, including facility repairs, new constructions, and equipment acquisition such as antennas and radios under the umbrella of SMM ART activities. Whereas, the unit's ICT enhancements included multiple devices such as laptops, monitors, and cameras along with restoring a 10-line telephone network as well as infrastructure improvements. Cyber security was bolstered through Harry's radio maintenance trainings and cyber awareness initiatives, resulting in a 96.16% performance rating in the Army Transformation Roadmap Evaluation. Whereas, the provincial government of Davao Oriental commends Lieutenant Colonel Pia for his outstanding competence, exemplary and visionary leadership, and unwavering dedication in leading the defeat of RSDG Jaguar and forcing the withdrawal of RSDC NEMRC, thereby honoring himself the 67th Infantry Agila Battalion, the 10th Infantry Division, and the Armed Forces of the Philippines. Wherefore, on motion of SP member Rochi M. Ravelo unanimously seconded by all the SP members present, it was resolved, as it is hereby resolved, commending Lieutenant Colonel Edwin L. Pia, 0-135513 Infantry General Staff Corps Philippine Army for his eminently meritorious and valuable service rendered as commanding officer of the 67th Infantry Agila Battalion and the 10th Infantry Division Philippine Army from 4 September 2023 to 14 September 2025, achieving remarkable accomplishments in operational intelligence and civil military undertakings in the province of Davao Oriental. Resolved finally that a copy of this resolution be furnished Lieutenant Colonel Edwin L. Pia, 0-135513 Infantry General Staff Corps Philippine Army for his eminently meritorious and valuable service rendered as commanding officer of the 67th Infantry Agila Battalion and the 10th Infantry Division Philippine Army from 4 September 2023 to 14 September 2025, achieving remarkable accomplishments in operational intelligence and civil military undertakings in the province of Davao Oriental. Resolved finally that a copy of this resolution be furnished Lieutenant Colonel Edwin L. Pia, 0-135513 Infantry General Staff Corps Philippine Army Headquarters, 67th Infantry Battalion, 10th Infantry Agila Division Philippine Army, Camp Ramon Apostol Barangay Salinkumot Baganga Davao Oriental, for his information and reference. Carried and approved and hereby certified to the correctness of the foregoing resolution by the Secretary of the Sanggonyang Panlawigan, Mr. Maximo A. Nazareno II, attested and certified to be duly adopted by the Presiding Officer Vice Governor Maria Glenda Monet Rabat Gaeta, and approved by the Provincial Governor, Honorable Nelson L. Dayanghirang. So with this, before we formally give this resolution of commendation, sir, we will give you the floor for your message for the people of Davao Oriental.
To the Presiding Vice Mayor, Honorable Ginda Rabat Gaeta, ma'am, to the members of this 19th session, good afternoon. I am really truly honored to receive this award. I'm not expecting actually. Yeah, no, I didn't think of your effort, ma'am. It's very much appreciated your effort to speak up for my behalf, ma'am, no? Yeah, sorry, ma'am. Anyway, although that award is intended to me, pero I am just a representative from the 67th Infantry Battalion. So rest assured, the award will be forwarded to the 67th Infantry Battalion that our efforts have been recognized by the province of Davao Oriental through the Sanggonyang Panlawigan. It will definitely add fuel to their motivation in performing their mandate, and of course, my mandate also. So again, ma'am, thank you. Thank you to the members of this session, thank you.
Once again, sir, in behalf of the Sanggonyang Panlawigan, we would also like to thank you. I wouldn't mind reading it even if it's a two- or 10-page recommendation letter because you deserve all the accolades that you're receiving for the good service you have rendered to the people of Davao Oriental. Are there any other members who would like... Yes, Honorable Dayanan, for a short message to our guest.
Thank you, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer. To one of the most highly active and very efficient battalion commander of the 67th Infantry Agila Battalion under the 10th Infantry Agila Division, to Commander Edwin L. Pia, thank you so much for your steadfast commitment to peace, security, and community service. Thank you so much and that two-year selfless service of yours that contributed so much to the safety and progress of our beloved province of Davao Oriental. Thank you so much for your leadership. Our utmost gratitude and the highest respect to you, sir, for your stellar leadership and our partnership in the public service. Thank you so much and congratulations to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Dayanan. Are there any other members who would like to make some manifestations? I believe we all share the same sentiments, sir. Congratulations, and I think the people of Davao Oriental will not forget what you have done for us in making sure that the peace efforts, the peace and development efforts that we're all working together, we have finally achieved, and we hope to maintain it too, sir. Through fruitful collaboration of all the agencies concerned and the LGU's concerned, sir. So thank you. So may I request everyone to join us here at the front for the awarding of the resolution of commendation. So we are still under suspended house rules. May I ask the secretary if we still have other guests to accommodate today?
There are none.
There's none. So may I again request, so we can proceed with the discussion of the other items in the order of business, may I request again Honorable Elijah Palmaheal for the motion for the lifting of the suspension of house rules.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I move for the lifting of the suspension of house rules. I do so move.
There was a motion presented by Honorable Elijah Palmaheal seconded by Honorable Jerome Dayanghirang, Honorable Manaitai, Honorable Lindtugunan, and Honorable Makaira. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. What is the next item, Mrs. Secretary?
The next item is first reading in referral to committees. We have here proposed ordinances. Proposed ordinance number 9-2025 authored by Honorable Rochi M. Ravelo and co-authored by Honorable John Erwin G. Montoho.
Refer to Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Another ordinance, number 10-2025 authored by Honorable Rochi M. Ravelo and co-authored by Honorable Daoud Linzag.
This is referred to Committee on Muslim Affairs.
We also have here proposed resolutions. The first one is proposed resolution Number 18-172-2025 authored by Honorable Rochi M. Ravelo.
This is referred to Committee on Agriculture and Food.
And the other one is Communication Number 18-174-2025.
We can start first with the other communications that will be 166 first. We will tackle first Communication 166.
Okay, Madam Chair.
So we can have the sequence of the numbers.
So under Communication, we have here Communication Number 18-166-2025.
This is for the information of this August body, particularly the Committee on Finance, Budget, Appropriation, and Ways and Means.
Communication Number 18-167-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Labor Employment, Civil Service, and Human Resource Development.
Communication Number 18-168-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Agriculture and Food.
Communication Number 18-169-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Transportation.
Communication Number 18-170-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Disaster Preparedness.
Communication Number 18-171-2025.
This is for the information of this August body.
Communication Number 17-173-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Peace and Order and Public Safety.
Communication Number 18-174-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood.
The next item is committee reports. We have Committee Report Number 18-109-2025 by Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations and Ways and Means.
Considering the committee chairman on finance budget is on official business and is not present in today's regular session, the vice chairman will take over as per our internal rules. Is our vice chairman in sight? The vice chairman is also not present in today's session. What about the members of the Committee on Finance? The members are Honorable Daoud Linzag, and Honorable Montes, and Honorable Castro. All of them are not present. Some are on official travel and on leave. So in our internal rules, we cannot continue to tackle the said measure. Hence, this is deferred and will be tackled in the next regular session. So what is the next item? We will defer the adoption of the said committee report and so with its corresponding resolutions. We will now proceed to the next item.
The next item, Madam Chair, is calendar of business. Under business for the day, we have a proposed resolution Number 18-166-2025, all series of 2025 authored by the Honorable Rochi M. Ravelo.
Considering again that we were not able to adopt the committee report to which these proposed resolutions are an output of, we will have this deferred until the next regular session. So what is the next item?
Our next item is proposed ordinances for third and final reading. We have proposed provincial ordinance Number 18-169-2025. We have proposed Provincial Ordinance Number 18-04-2025 authored by Honorable Joson Michael G. Dayang Hirang.
Okay, so Honorable Joson Michael Dayang Hirang, you're recognized for the motion for third and final reading.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer. I move for the approval of the proposed Provincial Ordinance Number 18-04-2025 on ordinance implementing the manual on barangay protocol for handling children in conflict with the law and children at risk and the integrated care management protocol for handling of CICL and N4CAR in the province of Davao Oriental for third and final reading. I'd also move.
There was a motion for the passage of Provincial Ordinance Number 18-04-2025 for third and final reading on motion of Honorable Joson Dayang Hirang. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Mrs. Secretary?
Yes, Madam Chair. All have voted unanimously in favor of proposed ordinance Number 18-04-2025.
Provincial Ordinance Number 18-04-2025 is now approved for third and final reading. So what is the next item in the Order of Business?
Our next item is other matters.
We are now under other matters. Yes, Honorable Elijah Palma Hill.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Considering that next session dated November 19, Wednesday, there will be a regional officers election of the Provincial Board Members League of the Philippines or PBLMP on November 19 to 21, I would like to ask this August body if we would like to agree on moving the date of our regular session, Honorable Presiding Officer, because 19 will be on Wednesday next week.
Okay, what would be the preference of the members of this body? Considering that 19 is the first day of your activity, the PBLMP, right? So if everyone will be in agreement, we can have this session the day before, that's 18, that's on a Tuesday. Would that be amenable to everyone?
Yes, I would like to also ask if what's their time preference, whether or not...
Morning or afternoon?
Yes, because simultaneously, we will also have a rice distribution in District 1. Siguro on that date is, ano na, Karaga, first day of Karaga distribution.
So would you all prefer we do a virtual session? Just like what we did the last time for the special session? So that we can still all be present while at the same time attending all the important activities that spearheaded by the province?
Okay, ako, Honorable...
So what about the others? Are you good? Will it be on Tuesday or still on a Wednesday? If we do a virtual session?
The rice, the always board dun. Ang rice distribution will always start at 8:00 AM in the morning until depende sa hapon. Siguro at around lunch, yeah, before lunch.
Yeah, because usually the program is only a very short program. So we usually finish ahead if there are only three barangays in the morning. So by 11:00, 11:30, we might be, everyone would be...
It depends on the travel time, Honorable Presiding Officer, because sometimes maybe on that date, I will look into the schedule if hindi ba malayo ang ating puntahan 'yan. Baka wala ring signal.
Okay, we can bring a Starlink. Oh, yeah, can you check?
Ah, yes. For November 18, Tuesday, Honorable Presiding Officer, our rice distribution for District 1 will start at Barangay San Thiago, Karaga, 8:00 AM. Then next is Kaninag, 9:30 AM, and San Miguel, 10:30 AM. So most likely, sa tulokabarangay na ako ang namensun, mag-isa lang 'yun ang naisignal, which is San Thiago. But dili pa 'yun na siya klaro. Okay, once mag-sulod na pugkas sa, medyo hinay, nabuwan ang signal sa sulod sa centro.
Yeah, so San Miguel will be the last...
San Miguel will be the last at 10:30 AM until 1:00 PM.
What will be the schedule for the afternoon?
1:00 PM is PM sobre kare or pantuyan, which is kanapun wagoy signal yapo.
No signal. So would Starlink be sufficient?
I don't think so, Honorable. If ever Zoom meeting ang ating, Honorable Presiding Officer, baka medyo choppy ang, ano eh, ang signal from there to here. Siguro, I would like to ask the technical support staff kung saan lang ma-suggest.
Can we ask if we bring a Starlink device?
Depende po dere. So sure, unless na-stable Wi-Fi connection.
Okay, from Barangay San Miguel, if we go down to the area where there is signal, if we can pre-arrange that, would that be fine? Just like what we did the last time?
Yes, Honorable. Maybe we can also ask the cooperation of the Sangguniang Bayan, Panlongsod. Bayan, Sangguniang Bayan of Karaga to ask their, ano, session hall that we can use during that time. Siguro, kung anong time masabutan na to dere, the same last time katunato sa katiil para lang makondukan na to atong regular session on Tuesday.
So we won't be able to miss the session for that week. So, yes, Honorable Montoho, for your suggestion.
Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer. So I think what the best thing to do, siguro, is since you guys are, you know, being mobile that day, the people from District 1, we will just adjust. No, let's just say we set it up at 11 o'clock. Ready na kami ng 11. But if you don't get there at 11 and don't have a signal, notify lang na, or there's gonna be a delay. At least, we're aware, but we will make the adjustment kasi kami 'yung naka standby eh. Kayo 'yung naghanap ng signal.
Thank you, board dun. Most likely, siguro, Honorable Presiding Officer, we can be at the Sangguniang Bayan's...
By 12?
Siguro. If ever masunod natin ang, ano, 10:30 na schedule, assuming 10:30 talaga magstart ang San Miguel, siguro from San Miguel to the poblasyon of Karaga will be a travel time of 20 minutes. More or less, depende sa ating takbo. But if you consider the program of about 15 to 20 minutes, most likely 10:50 matapos plus 20 minutes na travel time, more or less, 11:30 or before. Given mag, more or less allowance po sa...
Okay, so we will just all keep in touch. What about our SB Support Services Office? We're good? 11, 10? Okay na. So mga 12, 11:30? So...
11:30 is a safe estimate, siguro.
Yes, I think 11:30 is a safe estimate. We just have to find the place where there's good signal and we can all set up. It may not necessarily be, because we don't know the schedule also of the SB... Because Tuesdays are always sometimes session schedules also for local Sanggunian. So anyway, we'll just find an ideal place. We'll pre-arrange it before we go there by next week. So are we good with that? So 11:30 on Tuesday will be our mobile, virtual session nalang tayo lahat.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Anyway, we're all learning to be techie now. So we really actually had a very funny experience when we were... Yes?
There is a suggestion?
Come on. We can discuss the proposed. Yes? Yes, there is a suggestion?
Yes, there's a suggestion by Honorable Shanin Lintugonan and board Joson Dayang Hirang that we move the, we should conduct the regular session at 19:00 in the morning because on the 19th is only the registration of the board members. And the election proper will be conducted on November 20, Thursday. So we can have it in the morning. So kung sino 'yung gusto mag-travel nalang in the afternoon, pwede na siguro.
So do we have any schedules? We don't have any schedules on the 19th for the distribution?
The second day of Karaga distribution.
Again.
But if we want to attend the 18th, November 18th distribution of Karaga, we can attend it the whole day para lang to make way for our regular session on the 19th.
Yes, yes. We can just request to be excused on the morning of 19th?
Zoom, ah, sorry. In 'yung suggestion is Zoom or Zoom yapon daw. Or, ano sa ba, okay raman siguro na, no?
What's the schedule for the morning of the 19th? Maybe if we can, if we can just request to be excused on that day and somebody can represent the provincial officials?
On the 19th, Honorable Presiding Officer, the first venue of our rice distribution is Barangay Palma Hill, yours truly, in Karaga at 8:00 AM and followed by Barangay Santa Fe at 9:30 and Barangay Manurigao at 10:30 AM. So, yes, Honorable.
Manurigao?
Manurigao, yes.
What's the second one, the second one?
Santa Fe.
Santa Fe and Manurigao. Okay, so...
Which all of these barangays has no signal at all.
So...
18 na lang, morning.
Wala, is it far, 'yung from the...
Yes, ang travel time ng Palma, ang Palma Hill is, ano pa, magkakiad ka pa.
So which would be more ideal? Or is everyone going to the PBLMP activity?
Yes.
So who will be joining the distribution?
I think it is you, Honorable Presiding Officer.
So you won't be joining. So most of you will be on travel, so you will all be available. So I can probably, we can have it on the 19th if you want. On the 19th in the morning, we can have a session here, physically present. And what about it? Zoom na lang din?
Zoom na lang yapon.
Maybe some of you will be traveling already in the morning, right? So we can have a Zoom meeting, a Zoom session. Okay, virtual session pala. 19th in the morning, so what time? 9, 9 o'clock? 9, 9:30? What would be the preference? Will it be 9 or 9:30? 9:30? Okay, 9:30 is, I guess, safe, ano?
Di na tamak aten sa, ano sa ba, sa rice distribution.
Are you joining the rice?
Kung ano ba, is kung matunong siguro sa 18 at ang rice, ang session.
Yep, I think everyone will be also good with that if 18. Okay na lang din tayo. Dun sa original na scheduled na 11:30, we'll have a virtual session. And to those who will be going to Karaga, we'll just join in through Zoom. Okay, so we're good.
Final na, 18.
Final, final and executory.
Final 18? You move for the, ano?
Yes, word.
Okay na, 18, 18 natatanan.
11:30, 18, okay, for our regular session. So we'll just have to have set everything up. So this is... Yes, Zoom. We can do hybrid setup. So others who are physically present here, they can join here. Others who are on travel, you can also find a place where there's good signal and then you can still join in the regular session and can all take part. Yes.
Yes, one more thing, Honorable Presiding Officer. There is a Communication Number 18-175-2025. I move for it to be included also in the Order of Business for today.
So this came in late already. So if it does not restrict us, if our internal rules does not restrict us from considering this to be included for first reading, which means just for referral to the committees, if there's no objection, will there be any objection from the members? We have an additional communication that's Communication 19-175-2025 and this will be referred to...
Committee on Health.
Committee on Health and Sanitation. So... What? The communication is with regards to a request for an authority for the governor to sign a memorandum of agreement with JADMA Orthotics and Prosthetics Center. So that's it. This is referred to the Committee on Health and Sanitation. Okay? Please take note, Mrs. Secretary. Yes, Honorable Montoho?
Madam Presiding Officer, I'd like to request all members of the Committee on Health and Sanitation and Disaster and...
Preparedness.
Disaster and preparedness to please stay for a committee hearing right after the adjournment. Thank you.
Okay, please take note, members of the Committee on Health and Sanitation and Disaster Preparedness, there will be a meeting after this regular session. Yes, Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I'd like to inform also the members of the Committee on Disaster Preparedness that right after this regular session, matay meeting regarding Communication Number 170-2025. Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer.
Please take note again, Committee on Disaster Preparedness, there will be a meeting after this regular session. Are there any other matters to be discussed? If there is none, what is the next item in the Order of Business?
Next item is adjournment.
Oh, for adjournment, yes, Honorable Elijah Palma Hill?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I move, if there is no other matters to be discussed, I move for the adjournment.
Okay, there's a motion for adjournment of this regular session until next Tuesday?
Tuesday, November 18.
November 18. Okay, 11:30. On motion of Honorable Elijah Palma Hill, seconded by all members present, any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Session is hereby adjourned.